All right, so I just have a couple of updates for everybody if you want to go ahead and get the pre-meeting started. So just an update on the comprehensive plan. City Council held a public hearing and first reading of the 2040 Plan on March 13th and the second reading on March 27th, so we now have an adopted comprehensive plan. And we've had a lot of interest from property owners and applicants over the course of the review and adoption, and so we anticipate getting a few projects underway as a result of the adoption of the new comp plan. And so on other news, I think the Planning Commission is somewhat aware of Senate Bill 213. Okay, just wanted to give you a couple of updates on that. And actually, we just had a late-breaking update today, and I'll kind of wrap up what I'll say with that. So most of the front-range communities are on record as opposed to this. Does everybody know what 213 is? Okay, I thought you did. Including the Colorado Municipal League and the Denver Regional Council of Governments. As it was written, counties would not be subject to the bill, though many county officials, including Adams County, have spoken in favor. Westminster City Council passed a resolution in a 5-2 vote opposing the bill. Senate local governments and Housing Committee held a hearing on April 6th that lasted over 12 hours. Staff from Community Development, Economic Development, and Public Works and Utilities spoke in opposition on behalf of the City Council. The Senate Committee was set to vote on the bill on April 18th and had a late night with amendments to the bill that pulled back some of the impacts, but the overall bill was still pretty flawed, in our opinion. Due to the proposed $15 million in new spending, the Senate Appropriations Committee was supposed to vote on April 24th. It got moved to April 25th. Then a full Senate vote is still needed to advance the bill. Now, what happened, what I understand happened today is we just got notice that a lot of what was in the bill got gutted, and the main concern of all of us here in Westminster and many others was the ability for the state to take control over local matters, home role authority, and so apparently that has been removed from the bill. And so it's pared down a little bit, and we just got that news today, which is good news from our end. So I don't know exactly how it reads now. Just found out about this just a little while ago. So there seems to be a little more enthusiasm over it. I'm not sure yet if we're going to change our position of opposition yet, but we'll have to review it internally and advise the City Council as such. Anyway, I know you all had some thoughts on that, but if not, that's okay.
Yep. It is seven o'clock, so I'd like to welcome everyone here and announce that this is the April 25th, 2023 meeting of the City of Westminster Planning Commission. Will the Clerk's Office please call the roll?
James Boshert.
Here.
Joe McConnell.
Here.
David Carpenter.
Present.
Rick Mayo.
Excused.
Tracy Culling.
Here.
Lawrence Dunn.
Here.
David Tomczek.
Here.
Elisa Torres.
I don't know if she's excused or not.
Okay.
My guess is not.
And Chinu Zhang?
Correct, here.
I apologize.
The quorum is present, and it looks like all members will be voting. That includes Commissioner Young. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting of February 28th, 2023? Don't be shy.
So moved.
Commissioner Dunn? Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carpenter, thank you. We'll go with a voice vote today. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say nay. Passes unanimously. Abby, do I read the next, or do you? It says CCO, please read aloud.
There is one item on the agenda for the evening: Public hearing and approval of an amended PDP and amended ODP for West 81st Place and the Sheridan subdivision, 8160 North Sheridan Boulevard, to be known as Elite Motors.
Tonight's only agenda item is 3A: Public hearing and approval of the amended PDP and amended ODP for West 81st Place and Sheridan subdivision, 8160 North Sheridan Boulevard, to be known as Elite Motors. Or did I just repeat what you said? Well, I guess it doesn't matter. It says I should read that. So do we have a presentation from the city? Mr. Gurman.
Thank you, sir, and good evening, everyone. My name is David Gurman. I'm the Development Services Coordinator for the Community Development Department. Next slide, please. As part of bringing this project before you, a staff agenda memo has been created, and tonight's public hearing has been properly noticed. The agenda memo, its associated attachments, tonight's PowerPoint presentation, the public note is published in the Westminster window, the mailed notices, and the posted notice are hereby entered into the public record at this time. The notices of the public hearing were mailed to approximately 1,100 recipients, including businesses, residents, and property owners within 1,000 feet of the parcel under consideration tonight. The city has also posted the hearing date and time on its website. Next slide, please. Here is a map showing the Elite Motors property at 8160 Sheridan Boulevard. This property is outlined in red and is located on the east side of Sheridan, slightly north of 81st Place. Next slide, please. The site plan developed by the applicant makes use of the existing layout and building found on the property. The site was once home to a Diamond Shamrock gas station, which ceased operations in 2014. The underground fuel tanks for the gas station were removed, and the site was certified as properly decommissioned by the State of Colorado in 2015. The proposed adaptation of the property is a small automobile sales facility, represents an adaptive reuse of an otherwise vacant and unused site. Next slide, please. Section 11514 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 10 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing rezonings and preliminary development plans. Staff finds that the preliminary development plan generally meets these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. Several examples of these criteria are that the PDP is compatible and harmonious with existing public and private developments in the surrounding area; streets, driveways, access points, and turning movements are designed in a safe and convenient manner; and that the PDP will not preclude future public land dedications. For those selected example criteria, staff finds that the PDP is compatible with existing developments in the surrounding area, that the access point is designed in a safe and convenient manner, and that the PDP will not preclude future land dedications. Next slide, please. Section 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code contains 17 criteria that are to be considered when reviewing official development plans. Staff finds that the official development plan generally meets these criteria as outlined in the agenda memo. Several examples of these criteria are that the plan exhibits sound, creative, or efficient planning and design principles; that the proposed redevelopment of the site poses no significant adverse impacts on future land uses and future development of the media area; and that existing streets are suitable to carry the traffic projected to be generated by the site and the use. For these selected example criteria, staff finds that the ODP exhibits sound planning by adaptively reusing an existing property, reducing the propensity for sprawl; that the proposed use will not harm any adjacent uses or preclude future development; and that the surrounding road network can accommodate the additional traffic generated by the new use, which is projected to be substantially lower than when the site was used as a gas station. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission hold this public hearing tonight, and that it recommends that the City Council approve the proposed preliminary and official development plans put forth by the applicant. The recommendation is a recommendation of approval based on the criteria that the PDP and ODP both amended meet the requirements of Sections 11514 and 11515 of the Westminster Municipal Code, respectively. Next slide, please. Staff finds that the recommendation of approval of the PDP and ODP applications would support the city's strategic plan priority of building a system of intentional support for residents, businesses, and the environment that mitigates risks and proactively seeks out ways to ensure the community not only endures but thrives. This priority is met by actively facilitating infill development within the city. By supporting adaptive reuse of existing vacant properties, the city conserves resources, improves the efficiency of public infrastructure, reduces the propensity for sprawl, reactivates areas that have fallen into disuse and neglect, and creates new economic opportunities for both businesses and the city. The applicant is with us tonight and has a presentation to share with you as well. Thank you for your attention. There are several staff members with us this evening, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gurman. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Yeah, it'll be the next slide, please. And does the, is the podium set up? Okay.
You can move that microphone if you need.
Test.
Perfect. So, sir, when you're ready, just say next slide, and she'll advance it for you.
Okay. Go ahead.
My name's Derek Price. I'm with D4 Architecture, and I'm representing, yeah, why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself really quick.
Hello? My name is Avak Shabania, and I'm the owner of the Elite Motors, and this is my architect, and he'll be doing the presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
And we also use a civil engineering company and a landscape architect to also assist in putting the drawings together with the ODP and the PDP. Next slide. This just kind of shows the map, the zoning layout and the adjacencies of the properties, so you can kind of understand how the site relates to the adjacent sites. It's basically a commercial location, and there's commercial properties around it. There's a restaurant to the north, there's storage facilities around it. The neighbors have also given us positive feedback on redeveloping this piece of property, I mean, very sustainable way of upgrading it, or providing new landscaping, new lights, or providing new landscaping, um, new lights, uh, additional lighting, we had a photometric done to make sure that the site was properly illuminated. The building's been, um, upgraded, uh, the facade's been upgraded. Um, so basically, we're rejuvenating this, the site and making it a better location all around. And did I, did I capture everything pretty well? Was that anything else you've done to it?
A lot of vandalism going on in that area.
Yeah, 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 and so we're, the client's trying to keep it up, get rid of, you know, graffiti, vandalism, and this is an attempt to, to upgrade it as well. So, next slide. And just some, just some of the information on the slide, sorry, it's a little hard for me to see it from here. The existing building, it's a pretty small building, fourteen hundred square feet, uh, so we're not changing the building, it's all remaining the same. Uh, basically, when it was a, a gas station, it had an existing building on there, it's been reused, so that's one of the sustainable measures that we're doing is uh, reusing as much as we can of the context and the site. Um, and we're going to be park, uh, re- restriping it for parking and uh, meeting the ADA requirements for the site for, uh, circulation to the public ways. Uh, what else? Bike racks, we are upgrading the landscaping as well. Uh, and I, I mentioned the lighting, uh, next slide. And this is just a site plan that kind of shows the context of how it's being laid out. The building's in the center, obviously, we got the parking around the, the perimeter. Um, there's a trash enclosure to the south, um, and, um, it also kind of shows the lighting, might be a little hard to see where the location of the lights are, but you can see that we've upgraded the lights, um, and some site amenities as well. Next slide. These are the elevations of the existing building and, um, a bit of a rendering that we did conceptually with the kind of a montage of the, of a photo of the building to show you what it looks like, um, and with the upgrades. The glass is upgraded, been painted, stucco's upgraded on it, and, you know, anything with the concrete and everything around the site's been, uh, being cleaned up and, and so forth. So there's a schedule of all the different, uh, materials pointed out on the building that, uh, basically meet the existing, uh, look of what we have. Um, next slide. And that's it, I think, yeah. Um, I'll just open it up to any questions anybody may have.
Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I have one question as relates to design. It looks like the only thing we're really adding on this site, bike parking, of course, the new striping, but the only infrastructure really is the proposed new ADA ramp in connection to the sidewalk. However, that's way at the northwest corner of the site, and the existing parking and ADA ramp to the building is on the southwest corner. Why, why would you not try to align the, that ramp so it's a straight across? Cause that's, I don't know how, and, and I don't know how much accessible pedestrian traffic needs to actually access the site, but if you were actually trying to do it, it's, doesn't seem like that works.
Um, which is a
Abby, could you bring up, uh, the, uh, site plan slide, please?
There you go, thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't exactly understand how someone in a wheelchair gets from there all the way down to the ADA.
I think I get what you're talking about. Uh, so there is an existing sidewalk from the main sidewalk that goes along the Sheridan. And we're gonna make another s- extension from that sidewalk to our property line, and there's ramp going all the way to the main entrance.
Okay, so really, they're gonna be coming across to that striped area north of the building where you got the bike parking?
Uh, no, so where you see the property line, there's no parking spaces over there. So that's specifically for the pedestrians to walk through, so there is no cars parked over there in their way. Uh, it will be on the
Why don't you go back to the elevations?
Yeah. Thing elevation in the pictures, the backside of it.
There, you, you can see the entrance.
It will be on the other side of it, actual matter of fact. This is the backside of the property that's facing the storage units. Yeah, so the actual entrance where the sidewalk side is, so.
The elevations show the door locations.
Yeah, well, there's two, two entrances, but we're only gonna be using one entrance, which is facing the Sheridan.
And there's an ADA ramp right in front of the, um, entrance?
Yes.
Yeah, I see that, I, I just, um, are you just trying, I just don't see how we're people are getting there, because it looks to me like you're going to be going there and then down the parking aisle and then, and then through it. And, and we've got, you have parking spaces shown in the middle of the building, uh, by that door where that striping should be. I don't know, I'm, I apologize. I'm a civil engineer by trade, so I'm just try, I, I know accessible
Not a problem here.
Billing is important, it just, it just doesn't, it doesn't quite, uh, make sense the way it's laid out, in my view.
Well, there's accessibility that goes into the front door, the, the building, and then there's accessibility that connects, um, from the public, um, sidewalk to the site. And being a car lot, um, code-wise, you know, how do you provide accessibility? If you're, if you're a grocery store, it's pretty obvious you've got spaces right up front, and it's the closest space to the entry of the building. Being a car lot, you know, there's, there's, people are gonna be coming in, uh, if they've, if they're in a wheelchair accessible type of vehicle, they, they could be parking pretty much anywhere, cause there's gonna be a lot of new cars around, so they're probably not gonna be really going in the building, they're gonna be looking around at the cars.
Well, the parking space for handicap or who needs vest, wheelchair accessibility would be actually right next where the ramp starts.
There is one, yeah.
For the parking space as well. So they won't have to go to the parking lot, they just little park with the handicap, uh, parking would be, and they just go straight on the ramp into the building.
Okay, I, I do see, I, I see that from there, just accessing, accessing the site from the street.
It's there, it's there.
Again, it's prob- I'm probably being pedantic here, but it just doesn't, I just, it, it doesn't feel like it's quite the right place for that ramp, and I don't know if that's, that, that, that's just my, my comment, but, uh, I, I I see what you're trying to do, and I, I appreciate the difficulties of a reused site like this and a small project like this.
Thank you.
Abby, can we please return to the site plan real quick? Thank you, uh, if I may, Chairman?
Sure.
To help answer the question. So, if you, if you're looking at this drawing, the, the, um, the ramp and sidewalk that are coming off the main public uh, right-of-way sidewalk off of Sheridan, uh, didn't exist in this format, and so, um, Parcity Traffic Engineer Heath Klein did review this, and he determined this would be the best place to basically put something where we had nothing. Um, we, we didn't have this level of connectivity before. He, he does admit, yes, if we were designing it from scratch, we might have a, a bit, a bit of a different layout, a little bit, little bit tighter. But what he's trying to do is, you know, take an existing site, uh, add something, uh, to it that'll help improve it from where it is now. Thank you.
And I have a question for the applicant. One of the comments from the residents nearby was that it would be, um, very unfortunate if test drives were used on eighty-first place and Wolf Street. Those are both small residential streets behind this property.
Uh, you're talking about, okay, I got it. So, the test drive's gonna be done on eighty, no, nothing on eighty-first street is gonna be all on Sheridan. So, we'll obviously tell our customers that, you know, take to the left of the parking lot and go right on the Sheridan. Most customers would like to get their cars up to speed. Small streets, it's not somewhere you can accelerate, you know, rapidly and brakes and check all that stuff when you're test driving any car, correct? So, we definitely would suggest customers not to go that direction for reasons, A, is their kids could be playing outside in the summer, we don't want any liability, let's just put it that way. Somebody driving our cars and hitting a pedestrian or anything crossing the road. So, Main Street, Sheridan would be the ideal place we're gonna tell them to go to, if they want a test drive, they can go on the highway, on thirty-six, if they wanna go higher speeds, you know? Uh, I hope that answers the concern.
Right, great, I just wanted to see if you were aware of it, and you are.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Tomacek.
Uh, what kind of security are you gonna have for the site?
So, we're gonna have cameras, uh, we're gonna have a brand-new LED lights. Uh, currently, we, our neighbors behind us, uh, the storage units, they're having really hard time battling for the people living the carts over there and coming out and graffitiing and sealing stuff, so we're definitely trying to bring a lot of light, a lot of security cameras all around. I feel like if we lit up the property much more than it is right now, it's absolutely zero. Um, it would help, I don't wanna say scare away, people who have to know good, you know? Right now, for example, my building gets tagged on daily basis. I tried to keep up to paint it, but you come back, week later, back to square one. Uh, because there's no lights, it's dark alley as of, as of, as of right now. So, you know, when there's that ga- dark alley, there's always something going on, so.
Uh, I'm just wondering if you were planning to put up any
Absolutely, I mean, I, I, it, it is my business, I, I have inventory there, the customer, customer investment, I don't want it to get damaged, so absolutely we'll have cameras. Actually, we're planning to put four K cameras, which is great quality, you can literally see the face of a person if somebody would break in. To our property, it's gonna pretty much go towards the alley that's in the, in the back, the easement for the traffic to go around, if they need to go on Sheridan. That will also kind of cover some security for our neighbors behind us, if something happens, and those units, that we can provide services, you know, if something happens, hopefully not, but we'll have some footage.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner McConnell.
Thank you, Chair Bochert. So, in, in the packet, it mentions that the amended ODP includes minor changes necessary to support the use of auto sales. What are those minor changes?
Uh, thank you. Um, so the, there's two, there's changes being done at two different levels. The primary change is at the PDP level, Preliminary Development Plan, which is actually adding the land use. Currently, this is not an acceptable land use at this location, as far as it's not listed as a allowed land use. So, it, it does, uh, meet the criteria of the comprehensive plan. Um, so we're just adding the land use to make it officially allowable at this location, so that's the, if you will, the paperwork side. As far as the physical side, uh, this would be the restriping of the parking lot, uh, to reconfigure, create, uh, more usable spaces for the storage of both guest parking and the vehicles that, uh, the gentleman would be selling at the, at the, at the facility. And then the, the items that you've already heard, improved, uh, security cameras, lighting, and so forth. Um, the other thing that was done, uh, as a double check, uh, fire department carefully checked to make sure they have access as necessary, even with, you know, the new configuration of parking, uh, and they do, uh, okay with that. So, we, we had to make sure all those pieces fit so that the site could be both active and, uh, uh, function correctly.
One more.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Uh, this is actually for the city, um, getting to the acceptable land uses, and this is to address one of the comments from the public. Um, it appears that the previous allowable, uh, uses included repair garages, uh, something along the lines of a, say, a Firestone or something like that, that could just as easily have as many parked cars out in front of it as an auto dealership. Is that, am I correct in assuming that?
Yes, sir, that is correct. Uh, this used to be serviced commercial, and that could have certainly been, uh, something that would have come in as an application. Um, the, uh, the biggest item, I think, uh, to take away here is that, um, uh, this used to be a gas station, and as far as an impact in terms of, uh, traffic in, traffic out, uh, trip generation, turnover, uh, potential conflicts for pedestrians and vehicles along the Sheridan sidewalk or the eighty-first place sidewalk, much higher, because, you know, that's a, that's a much greater turnover, uh, reduced, uh, time segment between trips. Um, this will be, uh, most likely, just based on I T E study, um, this will be, uh, a lesser use of the site in terms of trip generation, so that should be a, a safer environment as well.
I'm sure the applicant would hope that you're wrong, that he's selling enough cars to keep that traffic up, up high, but I understand where you're going.
Nowadays, with the internet, it's, it's so different compared to what it used to be. Customers will come in, only the ones that actually specific interest in certain unit. Back, you know, ten years ago, you go on Goldfax and walk through hundreds of lots, and that was a lot more com- more traffic, more foot traffic as well, because obviously people coming in. And another thing I would want to mention that there will be no repairs or any of that kind of sorts of work done on the property. This is gonna be strictly display, clean, ready-to-go cars, because I do have a shop on Come, in Commerce City that I also own and specifically used to prepare the vehicles before they go to display on prop. So, there will be literally nothing going on, but actually retailing vehicles over there.
If I may add to that, that's actually, uh, listed on the ODP.
Yeah.
It's prohibited for repairs on the site.
Commissioner Dunn, did you have a question? Nope, okay. Any further questions? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open the public testimony and ask, Abby, did we have any voicemails?
No voicemails were received after the packet was posted.
Okay, and these emails that were received are part of the public record, so they don't need to be read?
Correct, but we do have an additional, um, two, two additional comments that, um, uh, Dave Gurman will read into the record.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Abby and, and Chair Bochert. Uh, so the first, uh, comment came in on April twenty-first, Linda Johnson. She's a, a resident on nearby Wolf Street, uh, did not specify the address. She says, "This is Linda Johnson, I live around the corner on Wolf Street in the Westminster Homes between eighty-first and Eightieth. I have lived here in Westminster over twenty-some years, have resided there sixteen years and own my home. I'm also a senior who values my neighborhood and property values. Although what is currently there since Sonic left and Shamrock Station is a total eyesore in quotes, it also seems like a very inappropriate location for a dealership or car sales. It definitely would not be a high-end dealership due to space, and we do not need any secondhand type car lots to beautify this older part of town. Definitely need something new, but I would say no to this without thinking very hard." The second, uh, comment received came in today, April twenty-fifth. Uh, Rachel Cook, living at forty-eight twenty-five West eighty-first place, unit one D. Mrs., uh, Ms. Cook is concerned about vehicular access points to the site, and specifically the potential for traffic impacts on eighty-first place. She is worried about traffic and pedestrian conflicts at the eighty-first Avenue street cut from the site due to the large numbers of school-age kids from the apartment and townhouse complexes to the east of the site. She further points out that the integration, excuse me, the intersection of eighty-first place and Wolf Street is already challenging due to cars being allowed to park on both sides of both streets, which reduces motorist and pedestrian visibility. Ms. Cook recommends that eighty-first place and Wolf Street not be used for vehicle test drives, as we've already discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. And since there is no one else here to speak in the public testimony, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and ask if we have any comments or questions from commissioners. Seeing none, I will ask if we can get a motion either for or against this application. Commissioner Calling.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to move that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council approve of the amended preliminary development plan and amended OD, o- official development plan for West fifty-first place and Sheridan planned unit development. This recommendation is based on the findings that the amended preliminary development plan and amended official development plan are generally supported by the criteria set forth in section eleven dash five dash fourteen and eleven dash five dash fifteen of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, okay, Commissioner Tomacek, second it. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. Do we need a roll call vote?
Chairperson Bochert.
In favor.
Commissioner McConnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Aye.
Commissioner Calling, yes. Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Yes.
And Commissioner Jiang.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, guys, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, do we have any old business that we need to discuss?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. David, uh, we appreciate your presentation. Well, I won't say which one we appreciate more. Okay, do we have any other miscellaneous business that needs to be discussed? Next meeting is Next meeting is May twenty-third. And seeing nothing pressing, I will adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Abby.